Getting on soon.
I'm ready to do this well. Everybody else is?
We'll get started.
They need to cut me off.
Yes, we are. Okay. I'd like to call and order the city council meeting for January 28, 2025. The time is now 7:03 PM. We will start with a pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent meditation. Okay, first item is roll call.
Mayor Scott Nickel.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Frank Gertner. Councilmember Adam Dyer. Councilmember Susan Romi.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Adam Dyer to participate by phone.
Second.
Okay, have a motion by Deputy Mayor Gertner, a second by Councilmember Romi. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, next is excusal of council members. We have none. So we'll move on to approval of minutes for the January 14, 2025 regular council meeting minutes. Does anyone in council have any changes or corrections? If you're none, I'll sign those into the record. Next is introductions and presentations. We have an introduction by Public Works Director Todd Scaldo for our new ground supervisor. Todd?
Good evening, council. I'm here tonight to introduce you to the new ground supervisor for the city of Indian Harbor Beach. His name is Quincy Smith. If you would, come on up here. I'll let you do a Q and A with him when I get done with my little thing here. Quincy comes from us from the Port Authority up in Cape Canaveral. He was the head ground supervisor for them up there. He has a lot of knowledge in landscaping as well as turf. Conditions and stuff like that. He's going to be in charge of basically their baseball fields, Algonquin, the parks, any other properties that we do have in the city. So he's a big plus. I've already learned quite a few things from him, as well as some good fishing stories that he's told me. And he's backed it up with pictures and stuff. But he's very knowledgeable. He has licenses, he has certifications as well. So we're looking forward, and this is going to be a big plus for the city of Indian Harbor Beach as far as moving forward with the new facilities that we're looking at, and as well as dealing with some of the issues we're having at some of the other parks as well. So again, he's going to be my lead in all that. He will also be the middleman for me when he's dealing with the tree committee and also with the garden club. We're trying to get the garden club also more involved in what we're doing here at our parks and stuff like that. The ladies are very impressed with him. They kept calling me and telling me, where did you get this guy? I told them he was off the Craigslist. So don't get your hopes up. Tarnish may start wearing in a while. But I'm looking forward to working with Quincy. He's already made some improvements in our department on certain things. And he's also a good teacher at some of the guys, you know, that listen and pick up some good tips and stuff like that, and practices as well. So I'm going to turn it over to him. I think he gets tired of listening to me, and I think my guys get tired of listening to me because we have meetings every morning and bring them up to speed. But he's very knowledgeable, so anything he can recommend to help us move forward, I plan on listening and try to implement it the best that I can with the budget I have. So I'll turn it over to Quincy if he wants to say a few, and you can quiz him or whatever you want to do, question him and all that stuff. So Quincy Smith?
All right. Thank you. I can't follow that up. Good evening. Well, first of all, let me extend my condolences to the family of the late councilman. I did not have the pleasure of meeting him personally, but everyone that I've met in the city said he was a wonderful asset. So, and he's definitely going to be missed. So to everybody sitting in this room, I can send my heartfelt condolences to you also. Second, let me say a very special thank you to city manager and to Todd for giving me the opportunity to actually be a part of this city and to serve and to be of service to the city of Indian Harbor Beach. And I'm very excited and looking forward to being here.
Well, thank you very much, and welcome.
Thank you.
Quincy, you're going to get in trouble if you don't introduce your special guest.
And that's my special guest over there. Well, and that's my little one over there. So we're excited to be a part of the city. Thank you. Miles.
Miles? And your wife?
Kristen.
Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
The only thing, I like to say, Mayor, that Miles and Kristen are definitely members also. It's just not Quincy, you know?
That's right. Okay, next is presentations. We have a presentation for a Tree City USA plaque. I believe that Mr. Neil Yorio is going to handle that.
Hey, Miles going to join me? Oh, good. So, good evening, everybody, and forgive me, my voice is a little out today. I have a little bit of a sore throat, but I'll see how I can manage through this. So, good evening, Mayor Nickel, Deputy Mayor Gertner, members of the city council, and fellow residents. It is with great pride and gratitude that I stand before you to present to you this plaque designating our city as a Tree City USA community. This achievement reflects our commitment to environmental stewardship and our dedication to enhancing the natural beauty and sustainability of our city. As you know, becoming a Tree City USA member requires meeting four key criteria. First, establishing a tree board or department. Check. Second, adopting a tree care ordinance. Check. Committing to a community forestry program with an annual budget of at least $2,000 or $2 per capita. Check. And finally, observing and celebrating Arbor Day, which we'll talk about a little bit more today. These standards demonstrate that Indian Harbor Beach values the essential role that trees play in improving our quality of life, supporting our ecosystem, and ensuring a greener, healthier future for generations to come. This milestone would not have been possible without the tireless efforts of dedicated individuals in our community. I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to former members of the ad hoc tree ordinance committee, some of who are in the audience tonight, whose work laid the foundation for this achievement. Additionally, my sincere appreciation goes to the members of the tree preservation board, whose passion and commitment to preserving our natural environment has brought us to this moment. To each of you, I say thank you. Your efforts have helped shape Indian Harbor Beach into a community that not only values its natural resources, but actively takes steps to protect and enhance them. As we move forward, let us continue to nurture our urban forest and embrace the principles of Tree City USA. Together, we can ensure that Indian Harbor Beach remains a beacon of environmental excellence for years to come. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
This is the plaque.
Yeah, you guys want to, let's all go down there. You want, and get a picture? I can have you guys over there. I'll just take one of us. All righty, I got plenty. Always.
Nice, nice plaque. Sorry, Adam, you're not in the picture. Okay, next is reports, starting with city manager's report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First item, update the city council on comparing applicants for future advisory board positions. Staff has developed an application process that would supplement resumes or letters of interest. Staff request permission to use the attached application going forward.
Okay.
Next one is update on the process to fill vacancy of council member Emeritus Boone. As of today, we still have only one individual, Mr. Nutt of 105 Ananawa Place, submitting for the position. The deadline is through 4:00 PM Friday, February 14. Fire Station 56 phone system upgrade savings. Chief Information Officer Hamilton, working with Fire Chief Lewis, were able to reduce the first year cost considerably, resulting in $6,200 in savings that will be transferred to the city manager's contingency account. This City Hall Stairwell Emergency Lighting Project update. Insulation of emergency lighting fixtures to meet life safety codes in the rear two stairwells was recently completed. Savings of $8,757 will be transferred to the city manager's contingency account. Property and liability insurance update. Last week, I signed a proposal from our insurance carrier, Preferred Government Insurance Trust, for $55,784 to fill a previous gap in our insurance portfolio. Specifically, we had insurance on our police department boat when it was out of the water, but we didn't have any insurance for collision or liability when the vessel was in the water. This insurance policy will provide basically full coverage for that boat going forward. Sufficient funding is available in the city manager's contingency account to cover the costs. Last week, the governor announced a special election to fill Representative Fine's Florida District 6 seat. And he also, the seat of Representative Mayfield will be held on the same date. The primary, if needed, will be April 1st. The general election will be on June 10th. June 10th is a date of a regularly scheduled council meeting. As that date gets closer, I'll make a recommendation for your consideration of whether to cancel or reschedule that meeting. Beach Renourishment update. The damages to our structure at Millennium Beach Park, which occurred when the contractor was pushing sand under the structure, were repaired at no cost and signed off by building official wiles. We had an unplanned stormwater repair project this week, or last week, I should say. As attached, I signed a proposal for approximately $38,000 to repair unforeseen failure in the piping system on Shore Lane. The planned commencement next year of annual videoing of these stormwater pipes hopefully will lessen the frequency of these unplanned expenditures. And we do believe we'll have sufficient money in the Stormwater Utility Fund to pay for this. Additionally, we received notification last week that the city is maintaining its ISO rating of three for one-family, two-family residential, commercial, industrial properties. Special thanks goes out to building official wiles and his staff for helping keep insurance rates as low as possible for our residents. Security camera project update. Due to a last-minute modification of the locations of the cameras to, from the original plans, to make sure we had good coverage of the doors, the entrance to the restrooms, I authorized a change order of $1,250 or 4.31% to that project. Algonquin Sports Complex Expansion Project Update. Last week, we had the project kickoff with the design team and owner discussing various site issues. With the expected start date of the project in early March, we will be placing signs at the two entrances to Algonquin, advising them that the Osceola Drive gate will be closed to the public for the duration of the project. And at Crispino Court, while that gate will remain open, walking through the park to get to Osceola Drive will not be allowed. And we do know from prior experience, there is one child from Satellite Beach who uses that as a cut through. So that's why we're trying to get the word out on that. Legislative session. The governor called a special session that the House and Senate gavelled in and gavelled out on the same day, and then gavelled in a special, a second special session to address illegal immigration, which is still ongoing. The traditional legislative tracker is provided to you. And planned items for the next meeting, February 11th. Hopefully, we get the interlocal agreement from Satellite Beach regarding administrative work for the muck removal project to you. That's been going back and forth with attorneys for a while. A point, and yesterday at the Pervade Public Schools Capital Outlay and Education Impact Committee's meetings that I attend, the Pervade Public Schools requested all cities without an alternate member for their cities appoint an alternate member. And so we'll have that for your consideration. And I've listed upcoming events. I won't read them all. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next is city attorney's report. The city attorney is excused from tonight's meeting. So we'll move on to council comments. Does anyone in council have anything they wish to say, starting with Deputy Mayor Gertner?
Haven't been to any meetings lately, but I have noticed a couple of two-freight sailboats that are not necessarily in our area right there, but like there's two right off the O'Gallie Causeway there. One was on top of the road there, it's been there for a while now. And one was lodged right next to it, actually, and the water tipped over. Plus, there's another one that is almost completely underwater. And it's, you know, if somebody's out there at night, I pity that, because they could easily run into that. And it's maybe about 40 yards from the, you know, the side there. I know it's not, it's a, whoever needs to be notified, we need to notify, that's all, on that use there. And I don't know if anything on your watch, chief, out that way with your boat people. I would like to have a little summary in the next time we meet on how our boat is doing, that type of thing. And we are taking care of things out there in the lagoon. It's pretty quiet out there. I know it's not the season, but just an update on that. Beach Renourishment, I'm excited about that. Go down there and see all that sand. I know it may go away in August, but at least we have something that can go away. The people who live there on the ocean ought to feel a whole lot better about that. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Councilmember Romi?
A few comments, but I wanted to ask, John, will the application be available online for the advisory boards, or?
Yes.
Okay. So they can just fill it out?
When there's an opening in the future, we'll have that on there. And part of our advertisement will direct people to it.
Cool. I attended the Satellite Arbor Day in De Soto, sort of as a learning tool for our Arbor Day, which is approaching on April 5. And I think it was the people that attended, a lot of the tree board, we learned the importance of layout and the vendors. So we have a meeting with the tree board tomorrow night, tomorrow night. It's going to be a great success. I think we learned so much from the Satellite Beach Arbor Day. There was the 60th celebration at Ocean Breeze that was great to attend, and Mr. Coffee came with me. We had another waste management recycling meeting and discussed what they can do at no cost to improve recycling, and possibly two cleaning stations at our beaches. And finally, I just wanted to mention that a lot of residents have gotten in touch about whether it's e-bikes, natural gas, stormwater, speed bumps. You know, everyone takes my ear now to tell me things. And I'm, maybe in the future, we can have a communications manager or something that could sort of funnel all these questions with answers pretty quickly. So just putting that out there.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Dyer?
She'd flexibility. And then next weekend. Also, I was.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I do not have any comments, but we will move on to public comments on agenda items only. If there's anybody in the public who wishes to speak on an agenda item, then step forward. These would be non-public hearing items that are on the agenda, by the way. Seeing none, we'll move along to unfinished business, and that's just item number three, acceptance of resignation appointments of voting members to the tree preservation board. This is to consider accepting Patricia Ferguson's resignation from the tree preservation board, and to remove from the table the appointment of residents to the vacant voting member positions for the unexpired term ending March 11, 2025, and March 11, 2026. City manager, call.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. For the folks in attendance or watching from home on the screen is a revised agenda memo that I provided to the city council earlier today. Ms. Ferguson submitted her resignation in November, and staff solic, per council's direction, staff solicited letters of interest or resumes from residents. We originally received three. One gentleman, Mr. Nutt, withdrew his application. I should say, we originally received two. Mr. Nutt withdrew his application last Friday, and Ms. McEnroy submitted hers last Friday. So we have two applicants for two positions. Therefore, staff recommends. Therefore, staff recommends that you accept Ms. Ferguson's resignation, remove from the table, and appoint Mr. Oliveri and Ms. McEnroy to the vacant voting member positions. The interesting part of your deliberation is the two voting members' positions have different ending terms, so you'll need to select one, which will end on March 11th of 2025, and one ends on March 11th, 2026. We will bring back at another meeting the reappointment of whoever you put for the March 11th, 2025 position.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll start off with, I would entertain a motion to accept Patricia Ferguson's resignation from the tree preservation board.
Second.
I'm not, I'm not, is that your motion?
Make a motion to have Ms. Ferguson's resignation from the tree board.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Romi, and second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. All right, next, I would entertain a motion to remove from the table the appointment of residents to the vacant voting member positions for the unexpired term ending March 11th, 2025, and March 11th, 2026. I am looking for a motion to remove from the table.
I will make the motion to remove it from the table for the unexpired terms.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Romi, and second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, so next is determining who to appoint to the vacant positions. As the city manager stated, we have two different term expirations on here, and we need to decide who will be assigned to which, to each one. They're both very qualified. I don't think it's a question of that at all, in my opinion. You know, I hate to say, but I think it's, you know, who was, who applied first? The sample, if I can get to it, and I believe that was Mr. Oliveri. Is that correct?
Do you speak on any one of them? Here?
They're both here.
If they wish to come up and speak, that's fine. Let's go ahead and do that. So, Mr. Oliveri, first.
Hey.
You just introduced yourself, and?
Paul Oliveri. Grew up beachside, Melbourne Beach, moved to Indian Harbor Beach, that's seven years ago. Heard the position is open, always been interested in the environment, and I served on the Melbourne Beach Council for a bit, the environmental council, years ago. So, I have a lot of, a lot of history, I guess, with, I'm not sure to put it. But interested in the position and I wanted to apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have any questions for?
No, I just like to hear them talk.
I can talk.
And what they have to say, of course.
That's a baseline, the ability to speak. Lee McElroy?
Good evening. I'm Lee McElroy. I've lived here for a little over 10 years now. I have two children that graduated from Satellite High School. One is a firefighter now, and he did serve as a volunteer here with Indian Harbor Beach while he was going through fire academy. And our daughter is a freshman at the University of South Florida in St. Petersburg. I have about 20 years' experience working in the nonprofit sector, and I have served Brevard County through the Together in Partnership Committee. It's a steering committee governed by our county commissioners. I am the current co-chair. And so, I meet with our collaborative provider agencies throughout the various scopes of nonprofit services. We meet every other month to share different happenings and needs and resources in the community. I just look forward to being involved with Indian Harbor Beach.
Thank you. All right, so I would, I guess I need a motion for the first term that would end on March 11th, 2025. That's the shorter of the two terms.
I make, I make a motion to appoint Mr. Oliveri to the term that expires on March 11th, 2025.
Okay, so I was gonna, I'd suggest that maybe doing whoever applied first, since they're equally qualified. That was Paul, okay, so, but that's, the first one we're considering is the 2025 expiration.
Got it, okay.
So, that would, his would be the second one.
Okay.
So, for the first one, on March 11th, 2025.
May please make a motion to appoint Lee McElroy to that position that expires on March 11th, 2025.
What we're saying is, it expires March 25?
Yeah, the first one.
March 11th, 2025 is the first one.
Second one expire?
March 11th, 2026.
March 25? You're talking about a month or two?
The reason they have alternating is they'll be three-year terms eventually, but to start the board last year, we staggered to get people on the proper route.
Is there another way we could do this, or is this the only way we can do this?
You mean, so it's longer?
I mean, March 25. Somebody goes in and you're here till March 25?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, they would come up for a reappointment, presumably, on March 11th, 2025. I don't know. I think we're kind of, we're stuck with this situation regardless. Unfortunately, it's only a couple of months, so. All right, so I have a motion, and I believe we have a second, so I'm sorry. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Romi, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Carries 3-1. All right, I would entertain a motion to appoint for the term expiring on March 11th, 2026.
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Oliveri to the tree preservation board that expires March 11th, 2026.
I have a motion by Councilmember Romi, second by Councilmember Dyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 3-1. All right, on to new business, which would be, there's item number four under new business. Tree Preservation Board's Arbor Day Celebration Funding Request. This is to consider authorizing the use of city manager's contingency, not to exceed $1,200 for the third annual Arbor Day Celebration Event, as requested by the tree preservation board. City manager, Coffee.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The chairman of the tree board is here with other members of the board, if you have specific questions. One of the responsibilities of the tree preservation board is the planning and hosting of our annual Arbor Day Celebration. The third annual celebration is planned for Saturday, May 5th, in Gleason Park. The board has come up with a tentative schedule and is requesting staff to spend, not to exceed $1,200 on items listed in the agenda item. Of note, the last two years, staff has purchased the tree for planning, which is included in the $1,200. Just for clarity's sake, if this is approved by council tonight, there would not be any money going directly to the members of the tree preservation board, but staff would make purchases based on their direction. Chairman Oreo is here, if you have any questions. Staff does believe we have sufficient city manager's contingency and recommends council authorize use of not to exceed $1,200 for the third annual Arbor Day Celebration Event, as requested by the tree preservation board.
Okay. Does anyone in council have any questions?
I've been involved with the tree board and know how they came up with this number, and I do feel like it's the right amount of money. They're not asking for much, and it's going to go a long way to make a really fun festival on that day.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay. All right, anybody else? All right, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the use of the city manager's contingency, not to exceed $1,200 for the third annual Arbor Day Celebration, as requested by the tree board.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Romi, second by Deputy Mayor Gerton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. Next is public forum. Anyone in the audience wish to come up and speak about anything? Please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Being none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Gerton, second by Councilmember Romi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 4-0. We are adjourned.